They come in here and talk.
I've never seen that before.
Upside down.
We're upside down.
Wow.
Of course.
There he is. He's upside down. Jennifer, Jennifer called me for a meeting a few weeks ago. She said she was having the same problem. Don't you call me for it. No idea.
Hello Cory, welcome.
Hello folks. It's funny that the camera is upside down on my.
Yeah, it's upside down here. We're not sure what's going on because I'm not even positive. It's up there, but how exactly you change that? I don't have any idea.
Okay, well, I'll go with it.
It's different.
Well, that's, I think, are you sure?
Hi guys, it's Hunter. I'm in the meeting. I'm gonna be on the.
I'm in a louder place. I'm on the road right now.
I think last time it was camera.
We have the same problem to our camera. Permission we should. And I don't know, one of the young kids fixed it. I don't know what they did.
Where's the camera?
The camera's right up here.
It's up here. Since the two items we have tonight, it can make you. Oh yeah, this is one of the. Yeah. Where, where? Oh, Tasci. Tasci, there's a HPA.
Yeah, I know what it is. I figured it out. I don't tend to.
Hunter, I believe you are there and you can meet yourself if you'd like. That's why I didn't get a lot of this task. Thank everyone for being here. Number one, I'm presenting the Comer County Director, sitting in this evening as staff and zoning board's field deputy. Tony Tubbs will be our chair this evening. If you have something that you wanted to say, go to that quick letting. There that. Zoom.
Okay, as indicated, our agenda is in person and Zoom, promoting. Those listening would like to mute your devices or phones while we're speaking unless they're speaking. To give us any background noise until it's time for individuals to speak. We have two important reminders, everyone. First, every time you speak, you must state your name and title. Second, must be careful not to speak over one another. So everyone who's listening can hear what's going on. As indicated in the agenda. The hearing will be heard for each application. Our applicants submitting the requests and responding to questions after the hearing. They're concluded. There will be a regular meeting deliberation of the application. Which remains open to the public for listening. Any testimony will have to come during the first part of the meeting. Right over here. Any noted testimony we accept accepted, and the board will deliberate amongst themselves. Then in the meeting, a proposal stipulation judgment matter of Commerce Street is posted in general. Also, the meeting is recorded and we posted it on the town's website. And I am going to ask Chris. Chris Edge was filling in for staff. You think roll call?
Yes. Chairman, many times.
Here.
Cory White side.
Here.
Hunter Mathina.
Here.
Thank you very much. Chairman, Cory Frankin Deli, Frank and Frank O'Angelia not here this evening. And Deli not here this evening. Steven Johnson is not here. You can. Agenda.
First item of this. DVA twenty twenty-two dash oh one, two fifty Webster Square Road. David Casco Jr., Tascow Motor East, Connecticut Group LLC is pressing. Motor vehicle use location approval change for ownership. The existing new dealer, dealer repair, DVA Tascow. License for zoning regulations. Eighty-three. The property is owned by. Pata. Webster Square LLC and its PSA zone. Speaking for. Speaking for Tascow.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Sit right there if you want. Just your name and that way it's in.
You'd love to forgive me. I haven't done this but once in the last 20 years.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the board and Mr. Edge. I'm Attorney Bill Stokes, Stokesberry, representing the Tascow family tonight. With me is Mr. Tom Moran, General Manager of Tascow Board. To start my remarks tonight, I ask that the record for this matter be corrected to reflect the correct name of the applicant. In the application itself, the words within the name were all jumbled. The correct name is Tascow Automotive Group. CT East LLC. I have a printout, Mr. Edge. The Tascow family has owned the four dealers on the site since 2014 when they purchased it from the Morandi family. At that time, the board approved the application for special permit use as an automotive dealership. Tascow family now operates approximately two dozen dealerships throughout Rhode Island, Massachusetts, Connecticut, and Florida. The family-owned business that started in nineteen forty's is now a third generation family-owned enterprise. Tonight, we ask that you approve a new permit resulting from the seemingly simple change in the ownership structure of the Tascow operating company. Again, Tascow Automotive Group, Connecticut, CT, I'm sorry, CT East LLC. From a corporation. To a limited liability company. This application is independent of any other recent application. Family made for developments on the site. The family has elected to switch from a corporation to an LLC to better manage the business needs within the growing family. The path to tonight's meeting is as follows. The change from Inc. to LLC requires a new application with DMV under their change of ownership rules. That then sends us here tonight under Connecticut General Statute fourteen fifty-four, which requires approval by both or by the ZBA, Fire Marshal, and Building Official. Both the Fire Marshal and Building Official have signed off on the application. Under your regulations, fifteen A three, ZBA has final approval for all automotive uses. Our request is rather straightforward. We ask that the board approve the pending special permit use application to allow the DMV to switch from Inc. to LLC, the better meet Tascow family needs. There are no onsite changes to the property as part of the application. There's no impact in the day-to-day operations of the dealership. I would be pleased to answer any questions from the board members.
Says no, nothing's changing from day-to-day, obviously, if you would be asked. Is the principal's room you're saying?
Yes, all stolenly Tascow.
So I have no Cory or anybody out here.
No questions for me.
We're all set.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against the application? But none being heard. Make a motion. I have a motion to close this portion of the hearing.
So moved, white side.
Uh, yeah. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Side.
Was it Hunter or Chris? Hunter and Cory.
Hunter here. I said aye. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have nothing else on your agenda, correct?
We have nothing else right now.
Other than to go. To take this for a vote.
Yeah. Okay, can I get a motion to accept the application?
Accept or approve.
Accept or approve. Approve, approve the location. Can you motion approve the location?
White side, so moved.
I'm sorry. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Roll call.
Okay, Cory White side.
Aye.
Aye, this is Hunter. Aye.
Mathina, aye.
Aye.
Tony Tubbs, aye. Tasci's three to zero. Thank you.
That closes that part of. At this point, I think I'm gonna hand this over to you, Chris, and very natural.
Sure.
Because I have stipulation here.
Right, the next item on your agenda is an executive session. To discuss pending litigation and proposed stipulation judgment in the litigation that's captured Commerce Street LLC versus DVA. So the appropriate to entertain a motion to convene executive session for purposes of discussing.
We get a motion to convene executive session for purposes of the discussion of the matter of Commerce Street holdings LLC.
White side, so moved.
In addition to the members of the, is there a second?
All seven.
In addition to the members of the board, you should also invite staff, Mr. Edge, attorney.
Okay, yes. Cory White side, on that motion, do you? Approve going to executive session?
I move that we can move to executive session inviting staff and counsel.
Thank you.
And.
All in favor?
White side, aye.
Dana?
Hunter?
Yes, Hunter, aye.
Aye. Tony Tubbs. Okay.
So. We'll go into executive session, come back in, and then any comments from the public can happen at that point, correct?
Yeah.
In a meeting, okay. Perfect, so let me. We're gonna log out. You'll get along good. If you guys get down the hallway, we'll grab you. We give it one more minute, Hunter needs to get back on his. Still get all those meetings. Pretty nice. What's up?
We haven't been able to, I expected the time. That's our off bridge that she gave you.
Here he is. I'm sorry, I didn't know to hop back, come back. This is Hunter.
Right, so we have Cory, we have Hunter, we have Rene Tubbs, so. So, pretty good, should we just, we're back again, have public comments or what do you?
Yeah, if there's any public comment on agenda items. Six A.
So hi, my name is Payne, I'm a resident of one sixty-seven Redwood Lane in East Bronx, Connecticut. I'm here to speak about Commerce Street Holdings, AKA Climate Engineering, opposed stipulation for judgment. I previously submitted my comments to Town of Rome, scheduled for the November thirty, twenty twenty-one meeting, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. The DVA meetings, those two packets should be in your folders. My neighbor Louis Rivera also submitted written comments since he wasn't available for any of these dates. Through some of those packets, now kind of go with feedback and then work my way up to tonight's meeting. So I'm not sure who's been on the DA since, uh, DVA since two thousand sixteen, since this issue's been going on since about two thousand fifteen, actually. Although I think you do have a great background as a situation provider to a point as a residential neighbor. We've been dealing with the issues that climate has caused since early two thousand sixteen, after he purchased land in two thousand fifteen. The illegally removed the tree buffer on their property, started using that area for the business. We have spent the last five and a half years dealing with the situation, while the continuous noise of cars from trucks hailing all time today and night. Over the last five and a half years, we have submitted to Town proof of this noise, illegal use, with pictures, written documentation, police records and videos. All these complaints can be found in the Town file pertaining to climate in this case. Through the years, we have met with the mayor, WWE mayor, the police, the planning and zoning department, the town manager, town planners, P&amp;D and ZVA boards, and the economic development department to resolve this issue. Recently, the planning and zoning board approved a vegetated buffer that you received in your packets from the town. For how they see that this beautiful mix of vegetation that will allow, that will grow one day, hopefully block the view of their property and building from my house view and other residential neighbors' views. It will take decades to get the buffer back, but will never compare to the one that we once had, a abundance of mature trees that were removed. This is the November thirtieth packet, so that packet exhibit A shows pictures of before and after the buffer removal. We are back to the poor view from my house where we can see their property due to loss of trees on leaves through the winter. These Google Earth pictures also show several loads of onoff-iced dirt brought in and then used to build up the land on thirty thirty-six Commerce Street by the street. That replaced an abundance of beautiful trees that were, that was once the buffer. Buffer, sorry, climate continues to violate regulations of Connecticut's, the agency's RCSA twenty-two eight dash one seventy-four dash twenty. I just want to mention that they continue to create noise from the running trucks. Including the minutes from P&amp;D meeting for March seventh, twenty nineteen, which is exhibit B. Our climate attorney said they helped repair motor vehicles there and they purchased a property in Trasher, Connecticut where repairs will be done. I have a police report, exhibit C, as recently as October eighth, twenty twenty-one, showing that they were working on a trailer at two thirty-six AM. This noise started about nine PM, it went on for five and a half hours when I finally called the police for assistance to stop the noise. I then moved the trailer after police intervention. Noise from the island trucks, truck engines and refrigeration units happen for hours at a time and we never know how long it will continue for. Once a truck pulls into their property for repair, once it starts. The deep sounding noise penetrates the walls of my house and it's disruptive. Houses cross the street from them, several several feet away, and it still penetrates the house walls. Other police records and videos sent via email, noise are in the Town file, and we'll corroborate this. The noise also happens when the trucks parked on Commerce Street waiting for the technician to show, to show up, to arrive. I also want to mention they continue to illegally, to use the illegally cleared buffer. Previous buffer slash cleared buffer law. Exhibit D shows pictures of violations and use of that cleared buffer as of twenty twenty. Charger trailers parked there and ran overnight. They also use it for storage of big metal pieces. Exhibit E also shows the illegal use. Both the pictures. Both instances happening after being served a season's assist order. All this use was done. Up in the March seventeen, March seventh, two thousand nineteen, P&amp;D meeting, our climate attorney said they were happy to do that lot and roped it off. I previously provided pictures to the town showing other use of the upper clear previous buffer and also illegal use of the yellow and white building as part of thirty thirty-six Commerce Street and part of this violation. This is exhibit F. Exhibit F is actually twelve pages, it'll show different exhibit letters since it was used in a previous packet or another condition or this condition, I don't remember. But it's, uh, shows plenty of pictures. Regarding tonight's meeting, before agreeing to the stipulation for judgment, I'd like to make the following points as part of the public hearing. Now, October two thousand nine, the ZBA granted climate dealer a repair license work to be done there. We didn't oppose this request. How would I and my residential, residential neighbors know this because noise issues twenty-four seven? Is there way to limit the hours of operation to reduce noise to create a more cohesive pattern between climate and the residential neighbors? Mechanic shops don't operate at three o'clock, they now causing traffic into the refrigeration noise. If you look at the minutes from October twenty seventh, two thousand nine, which is exhibit G, although the majority of the conversation is based on bus modifications as part of their request. Since then, no buses haven't seen on the property as entrant or in storage. With the many photographs, regular and aerial, we entered into the file of years, plus if I've never seen any of them, these meds may also be on tape with the town. We'd like to get a wall installed to block noise and the view from, because of the restoration as part of the restoration buffer. I think it's too late, but we're gonna put a request for that to help with that. This would be on the upper legally cleared buffer in the area closest to the building, east side of thirty thirty-six by the road. Keep trees in front of it, facing Commerce Street so that it's off in the look of the wall, help block vehicle noise and property view. In addition, in addition to the two thousand nine conditional experience, there were other requirements. One, there was a maximum storage limit of widely for twenty vehicles allowed on the property. This limit was mentioned in a previous EVA meeting by a board member years ago. I believe the work for two thousand nine conditional use variance was robust as not refrigerated trailers. It also doesn't show the required buffer requirements. That was ultimately a reason for the season's assist order that was served for thirty thirty-six Commerce Street. Since they illegally cleared the buffer and illegally used the land out there. I respectfully request these two thousand nine conditional use variance stipulations to be investigated for, for this case to settle. Not sure of the grounds and details of the lawsuit, what's included, therefore I'm not sure of the stipulation for judgment, rectifies the lawsuit. What's gonna happen in the future when climate requests a site of that plan from the ZVA to use the upper, upper lot in effect? Will have, in effect, will have on us residential neighbors for view and noise after this location. The new vegetated buffer will likely be removed. What will stop them from future violations? Their history of violations after conditional experience and violations after seasons assist order was served. I know people go to work there twenty-four seven and come home, but we are at home after our workdays and have to see and hear the consequences of climate's actions. Concern for our rights of a decent buffer and the quiet use and enjoyment of our property as residential neighbors. Please consider these effects on us as residential neighbors. In conclusion, before settlement is done, please consider the noise issues, view of buffer with proposed, well, additions to the vegetative buffer. Violations missing this is this order and review of the two thousand nine conditional use variance, which the season's disorder was based on. I'm grateful for the town, especially for taking the time to hear our concerns over the years. She solved us with her concerns from the start. Our residential neighbors, I are grateful that the town has announced climate illegal use of the land and excessive noise and circle of excuse and assist order. For the, for the usage. Thank you for taking the time to listen to things during the town. So I wrote this one originally for the November meeting. Then my neighbor, but one also who couldn't make it, this is from Louis Rivera, one seventy-two Redwood Lane in East Bronx, Connecticut. The following letter is a letter of opinion in regard to industrial zoning regulations and amendments and how climate engineering has affected our residential neighborhood. Submitting this letter due to my public absence, we're scheduled eleven thirty, twenty twenty-one DVA meeting. We provided the brief history. I contacted Jim Harville, Deputy Director of Public Works, approximately five and a half years ago, via email on February eleventh, two thousand sixteen. Replied and forwarded my email to Chris Edge, Economic Development Director. I was visited by Chris at my residence on Monday, February twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen. Our complaint was regarding sound and vibrations we were experiencing late evening into the morning. Initially, we thought it was Edge Corporation, but after discussion with Ed, the resident from Endrow, he indicated that you're not a third ship company. Our tension then turned toward climate engineering as we know, the growing number of trailers in the yard and trucks constantly going in and out of their facility. This made a lot of sense since I'm engineering with all our trees buffer on their property adjacent to Commerce Street in like two thousand fifteen. Basically, with our homes about six hundred feet away, I'm engineering through a group of the buffer trees. It is one of the major causes of effects, noise and sound we've experienced to this present day. Also, parents-wise, it looks terrible. All you see is parked trailers. Unfortunately, after five and a half years, we've had a high number of complaints and police reports over twenty files against climate engineering for most excessive noise, late evening, early morning hours. Yeah, the most troublesome and continue to add to the noise of the bylander trucks idle late at night, now refrigeration units cycling on and off all evening, as examples. We've had a number of zoning meeting issues involving climate engineering, denial appearances from two thousand sixteen to eighteen, compliance issues, unfilled landscape requirements, season's assist orders. Over the years, they have shown disregard to the rural community and to our neighborhood. Very sad. Our concern has to do with allowing climate engineering to operate climate and machinery late night into the morning. Why should these amendments be made to help climate engineering? Again, a lot of these issues date back to landscape, as I mentioned, as it was supposed to remain as condition of the conditional use variance that was granted in two thousand nine. What happened? The fact that we were able to remove the buffer supervisor by five, my name is only commission. You seriously need to take second look at any amendment change that would affect the climate engineering or operations, especially third ship hours. If you're going to make some amendment changes, we, they want to go back and redo climate engineering and have them install the proper landscaping, a lot of measurable items, the states. So that was my neighbor Louis. That meeting was postponed or canceled, but it was rescheduled for January twenty-fourth and again it was canceled. So in advance, I prepared. Another speech and. This bunch should have been your packets too, and I have some action Wednesday dated January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. So originally scheduled for November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one and. So originally scheduled for November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and I emailed some pictures to Maureen and Carol and Attorney Jeffrey Oklahoma, showing continued violations. They were taken on December nineteenth, it was only nineteen days after the action was, this action tonight, because most inflation was going to be presented to you on the thirtieth of November. We continue to park more than twenty vehicles on the property that by the conditional use variance. We are legally storing trailer, across the whole tractor trailer on thirty thirty-six Commerce Street next to the yellow and white building. This area is not approved for use. I mentioned some dumpsters, but were not part of the original season's system. And they continue to violate Town of Rome zoning regulations, season's disorder regulations, Connecticut State Agencies, twenty-two A dash one seventy-four dash eighteen, noise and reuse variance. So again, I was asking just for this all to be taken in consideration, January twenty-fourth. So now we're going to February. I, as I said, I mentioned before, I submitted those two packets, we should bring our folders. So now we're still dealing with the same issues, noise from island trucks, site violations, the continued, the continued theme is continued violations and disregard approved site mixes, the use variance and the season's disorder. Residential neighbors feel the impact, the lack of adhering to the regulations. As of today, February twenty-second, actually, February twelfth, I drove by, I had pictures of over forty trailers and vehicles still parked on the property. This morning, I counted twenty-two just from my window, and that's not even including the back of the property, behind the building, or the back corner. So even as they come here tonight to, to get this resolved, we're still violating. And that's what my, my whole, my whole purpose is, is that they still violate. They've recently been on the P and Z agenda as well. I don't know if Attorney Jeffrey Oklahoma is still available, I thought she's going to be here tonight to explain the reasons and stats with that commission. Is that going to be coming up on, I believe, April? They have deadlines, and there's all, there's a whole other side to this with the P and Z agenda, the P and Z commission. So they continue to violate the town's voting regulations, the season's disorder, the idling statute, and their use variance. Again, it's had an effect on us, is the neighbors. We've been fighting this for six years now, almost seven. At one point, my neighbor had someone come up from the town, and we looked at the view, and now we have external ops lessons, because the view we have now, the lap of the buffer, what we see out there now. It's been really tough, especially the noise. Once it starts, you know, that one is going to end, and it's so loud. So thank you for your time listening to me and my neighbors throughout the years, and for reading the packets and documents I submitted. It's really kind of the sun.
Thank you.
Yes, I have, I have everything now. Putting notes and dates on what we received. Some on this one, and I'll see something from the jury, so I hope.
Make sure. Corey, Hunter, you have any comments?
It's Corey, I have none.
Any comments that you have on judgment, the judgment or just public testimony that was just given?
No comments on my end.
This is Corey, there's no comments.
Looking over the draft of what I saw, I think the outcome is probably going to be much better once some of these things are taken care of, the coffers are recreated. As far as noise, that's not under our purview to chase. I think that would be a different type of complaint, turn it off.
Right, I mean, it's, this is the zoning board of appeals.
Yes.
We're not, we're not, you're not the planning, zoning position, considering the application from text, and that's the regulation, so revealing a proposed amendment, citing.
That being said, I think we need a motion to take action on this draft as presented.
Right, the motion, the motion should be a motion to approve the proposed and related judgment.
I hear a motion to accept. Motion to approve, approve this stipulated judgment.
This is white side, so moved. Motion to approve stipulated judgment presented by council.
I will second it. Any discussion?
Hunter. Hunter Mathina, I will second.
Any discussion?
None.
All in favor, roll call.
We'll call Corey White side.
Aye.
Hunter Mathina.
Aye.
Chairman Lenny Tokes.
Aye. Right. We're going to watch them very closely as to what transpires over the next few months of the stipulation. It's been on our docket far too many times, these issues. Make sure, make sure whoever needs to know, we are going to keep it ahead. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, gentlemen?
I will give that, Hunter Mathina.
I'll second, all in favor?
White side, aye.
Mathina, aye.
Thank you for coming, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Edge, for stepping up.
Jonathan, have a good night. Thank you, Ms. Kristen.
Goodbye.
Goodbye, take care.